Okay, uh, let's do it.
United States of America, to the Republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, tonight we have, we're only going to have one thing come up. Before we have it, when we talk about it, um, what we're gonna deal with, um, start doing, um, we're kind of in the draft of the private road ordinance, and then also talking about some of the stuff going on with, going on with that wall. Um, okay, so, my remarks for tonight is I've, I have seen, um, comments that in, like, kind of, um, I guess, state that we are trying to somehow impose new restrictions or harsher restrictions on the residents who live on private roads, and that is literally opposite of what we're trying to do. So, and this, what is in the package, so if any of you have seen it, is not a, like, that's like the draft, right? So, some of the things, like, the lack of restrictions, I guess I put it, are, um, hopefully will be, if they're not clear right now, will become clear as we're, but, um, just kind of want to disabuse everyone of the notion that somehow we're trying to make it work. So, with that, uh, I guess we should approve the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure.
Second, Dan, no? Okay, Dan, any discussion? Okay, all there?
All right.
Okay. Uh, call to the public, anyone would like to come up and talk about what we're doing tonight, or other things, come on.
Good evening, Peter Stevens, 7500 Cotters Lane. Um, reading over this ordinance, I think you are probably gonna hear, or you've probably heard a lot of the comments I'm going to make, such as, this private road agreement is going to require private roads to be brought up to standards that some of our public roads do not meet. We have private roads that people are going to lose their ability to build on with this. We are going to see, despite what any of you may say, an increase in costs for people that live on private roads. The way I read this is that those costs can be imposed by this board, whether residents agree to it or not, with a special assessment district. If that comes to bear, I feel that there's a lot of private road residents who own land and would see that these newer guidelines would be taking land from them. And at least in the state of Michigan, there is a legal ban on what's called taking actions. If this board is gonna be willing to pass an ordinance that's going to increase costs for people at a time when the cost of living is already going up, is going to make it harder for people to build on land that they already own, or perhaps gift it to a family member for a future investment, I'm just reading a lot of the changes that are being made to this ordinance, and I just don't see how they actually help residents of this township. I feel like, Mike, despite what you may say, this ordinance is only gonna make it more onerous and difficult for people to do things with their land on private roads. I hope the board will consider that going forward, and maybe rethink some of the ways that they would hope to address these noncompliant private roads that have been there in some cases for decades and decades and decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anyone else? Okay, um, comments of the board.
I think I would just add that all the things you mentioned, Peter, are already true in the current ordinance. And so, the issue is that we have people who can't build already, and that is why this came up, um, to our attention, so that we can fix that problem. Um, so, I just want to be clear, this, this is an effort to fix a problem that exists, and we have spent countless hours trying to resolve it, several special meetings, actually, to resolve it. It's not an easy, um, situation to resolve, it's a balance between, um, resident need and public safety need, and that's really where they're, where we're kind of struggling with it, is what's the balance between these two things?
Well, I agree, it's, um, right now, the public safety question is first of, oh, it's first and foremost, in the justice, there have been cases where we've had to give an ordinance that hasn't been enforced, and building has happened, in cases now where it's often fired in the public safety notes, and a clear hazard exists in our mind now. For small townships, statistically, you could argue, parts of it hasn't happened yet, but if you look across, you know, what the normal safety standards are, it's an effort to try to find a balance between these two issues. And so, I'm hoping we'll try to do here, and I'm absolutely opposed to slowing this building process down for anybody else, and we've been held hostage while everybody's talked about this, it seems like it's a system for now, it's been over a year.
There's, there's been a lot of, uh, issues, as Shelley brought up, that, um, have come up in these meetings, and, um, those of you that have been here know, when we're looking at the ordinances and, um, the stuff that we have to approve, if it's a nonconforming road, per se, it has to come before this board for approval. Part of the issue is trying to look at these situations and treat all of them fairly, even though they're, they're different situations, different people, roads could be, uh, the roads are always different, um, so it might be a turn, it might be the road's too narrow, it might be, uh, some of this other stuff. And in the intent, in the past, I think, was, there were a lot of roads that were built that didn't finish the process of becoming private roads, or going through the situation, or the paperwork to actually have all the things in place, like a maintenance agreement, easements, things like that. But when they come to this board, we have to look at those and still try to, uh, be fair with everybody that's coming, and not, not basically have different decisions for the same situations. And that's where the real challenge comes, and we're trying to get this to where things are, for lack of better words, normalized, that we can do that, and bring them all to where we can treat them all the same, and there's, there's no, uh, whether or not it's favoritism, perceived favoritism, uh, on any decision that we make. And it, and that way, people, when they come in, they know what to expect, that's part of the issue, too, because their situations are different, but trying to figure out what to do with all of them. And it, it has been a long process. Um, part of the situation is that we, we do have, uh, an ordinance in place that works fine for development, but the problem...
New development.
Yeah, new development. The problem is old development, a lot that was never built, uh, or never built on, somebody wanting to extend a private road, and then we're looking at a situation of, in some situations, they're extending off of what was a driveway, and now it's so thin that people can't get back there. Um, that's the kind of stuff that we're trying to address, right? It's not a situation of looking at this and trying to enforce on people and say, hey, you have to do this, but, and, and in a lot of situations, people don't even know, or don't even think about those kind of conditions. You might drive down your road and not even think about, hey, can a fire truck get down through here? I mean, a lot of us nowadays, you'll see Amazon come down there, UPS, and if they can clear it, probably a fire truck can do, as far as clearance, but those kind of situations, they, even turning into driveways, they tend to get overgrown at the entrances, and get it to where you can't even turn in, in a situation, if you have a hard time with your truck, with a, you know, twenty-foot wheelbase, you're gonna have a heck of a time for a fire truck getting in there. So, those kind of things are, are things that we're trying to look at, and trying to address, and trying to get it, and it's always a balance of, you don't want excessive costs, you don't want to burden the people with those kind of things, but they need to know those issues, too.
All right, well, there's enough, we're going to something different. Um, okay. Now, this, we have known, this is about the building, that wall in particular, there may be other problems, but that's what we know about so far. Um, if you look at that last window over there, you can see that there's water damage from infiltration. Um, Rick told me that they've tried to, like, basically fix the inside of it before, and obviously there's still problems. So, um, when Tony and I are writing our maintenance wish list, for the, what to do for some of the maintenance items, um, one of the things that you'll notice is there's siding, and then you have brick on the outside, and there was caulk in between the two, and it's kind of separated now, Rick again said it was big one before. So, he started with something like, we thought were gonna be pretty simple. While, while I was on vacation, I haven't, I don't know how it came of, like, the actual knowledge of the problem came about, but, in a nutshell, if you look at those two, um, basically, pieces of drywall that's been taken out and put back in, there is mold all on that wall. Um, we're still trying to figure out what exactly, if there, there, I've had a couple of different people, and, you know, believe me, telling me that certain, different things might be causing the problem, um, and they might actually all be right, at this point. So, um, I, there's pictures about what, what it looks like inside the wall. The mold is black, but as we have not tested, see if it's being a black mold, we're just told it has to be black. Uh, we do have an air quality report, you know, and after, that we're okay here to continue at meetings, you know, we won't do that when we're doing our remediation, but I did call the insurance company, they're sending out an adjuster, um, we, it's kind of likely that they will not cover it, but please, I did talk, when I talked to the adjuster, um, I, I'm kind of hoping when the person comes out, will, you know, can give us maybe there, but, uh, what is actually causing the problem, and, um, and then give us some, you know, kind of direct names and stuff, so we can get it remediated, and, you know. Um, what it's really doing for me is, I, I, we don't have to make any decisions tonight, but I wanted to bring it to your attention, um, I kind of wanted, like, just at once upon a time, there's an authorization for John to do repairs up to a certain amount, and if you guys, if you wanna do that, um, that way I can, you know, at least button it back up, and, you know, remediate, we'll be fine. Maybe we might have to take the whole, like, all of that drywall off at the bottom, and reseal everything, and then re-back up, after we figure out what's going on. Um, but then the other thing it brings up is, some of the possible reasons include, so, on the outside of the building, there are those wood pieces that are on top of the windows, they're, you know, thirty years old, they're cracked, water may be getting in there, um, there is, we do have, like, we can have, like, metal flashing put on top of those, um, but, because we're also pursuing, right now, the, um, changes to the township hall are going on in that, in that wall, so we're gonna have that whole wall re, um, vinyl, and all the windows put on that side. I thought initially, we would be waiting on these other walls to get new windows, which are very old, not very good, and, um, things like that, but we might have to, like, kind of accelerate, like, if we have to take off all of that siding to fix what leaks are, whether we want to, you know, add that as a change order to the, our, so, um, and I'll give you as much, you know, as soon as I get it, this is, like, really recent, it looks like last week, you mean, please, because the problem came to our attention, so, I'll keep everybody updated, yeah, um. And Rick, do you have anything to do here?
No, not really, definitely. You hit, uh, most of it, uh, the main thing is to, before we go ahead and, and try and repair anything, we have to determine what the problem is, and then, um, with the insurance company, they're going to do, as you stated, is give us recommendations on who can handle this particularly, John, if it is, definitely black mold. Um, but, but the main thing is to, uh, determine where it is, and what it is, what the cause of, and what it is. The guy that committed did the air quality test, he had a machine that'd go around on the drywall, and it could tell with this machine where the moisture is, so, it, it might be an idea to get them back to, and, and he didn't, um, make a report of that area, but he could do it on all the windows around here and just see, you know, so we don't have to tear the whole thing apart, but there's, there's several things we can do, and we should do, and definitely have to figure out what the problem is before we try and fix it, and we just don't want to put Band-Aid on it.
Okay, so, um, I guess my, if anyone has any questions?
I just think that, um, I don't know if this is working or not, but I just think that everyone has neglected to say, that when the contractors pulled off the, the drywall, it is wet in there, there is water. The plywood, or, or strand board, OSB, or whatever it is, is actually wet where he took off the panels. So, that is what disturbs me, the water is in there, and it has very little way to get out of there, so we are going to have to dry it out.
So, at, in this moment, we don't know the extent, how many windows, I mean, I mean, assuming it's mostly just under the windows?
The, oh, yeah, the only, um, actual knowledge we know is, um, when, when they were checking the wall for moisture, we don't have to report for that, um, and then, believe, where those two spots are, this is what's happening.
Okay, so they...
But we don't know if it goes all the way across yet, and on that wall, and...
Maybe with, with that test, they did all of the walls?
No, they did, they did down this wall, that wall, between the windows, there's no wa, there's no moisture, so it, it goes to show that it's, it's definitely around the windows that's coming in.
And were those two the worst, and why, that's why they were opened up?
Technically, yes.
I think, I think we gotta look at getting in a window contractor, because, bottom line is, I, it's probably the channel on the outside, there, I mean, there's a lot of things, if the windows aren't installed right, the contractor will tell us, you know, if there is issues, if there was something where it meets the siding, if it's, uh, if it just wasn't installed correctly, and, and they can look at all of them and find those issues, right?
And I, and I do know that one window in the corner, like, so part of it could be just the windows themselves, the top curved window on the corner, it's separated, and now that there's concentration in between the veins, so, ultimately, my, I guess on my wish list, is to be replacing all these windows, it's just, we, yeah, so, window contractors definitely on the list of people to come in, yeah.
I don't think it's the windows themselves that are leaking, and the flashing around the windows, and, and, and the guy that's looking at, they want to replace the flashing on top, the brick, the flashing on top of the brick is not leaking, because that goes up behind the siding, and it's at the end of the, end of the flashing, right at the windows, that it's not sealed, you know?
Which is also where that channel comes down.
What's that?
That's where the channel comes down, on the side of the...
The J-channel comes down, and that flashing, the window should have been up a little higher, and the brick down low, so that flashing could go all the way across underneath the windows, but the flashing goes up to the windows, and it's not sealed right there, and that's where the water's coming in, in my opinion.
Okay. All right, any other questions? I will keep you updated, and we will fix this, post it. Okay. All right, so now we're going to the private road, the discussion of the private road draft, so...
Mike, when I was preparing my notes for the meeting, I was gonna keep it brief, but then, I got, I'm very encouraged by the attendance tonight at the meeting, and I wanted to take this moment to, uh, focus on a little bit more points which are in the memo, but for the benefit of the residents, that's okay. Thank you. Um, I wanted to address the point, uh, summary of what the current ordinance, why the current ordinance is restrictive, and what, what are we trying to do with the draft to make it less restrictive? Um, the first one, no, in no order of preference, the current ordinance, um, has made the concept of shaped driveways as a pre-existing condition. What we're doing with this draft is we're trying to update the standards to accept, um, to, to, to reintroduce the term shaped driveways. Um, two, the current ordinance requires that once a permit has been issued, the construction should be completed within an year. So, in situations where somebody is just trying to do a property split for the purposes of property transfer, the current ordinance would require them to build a road to nowhere within one year. What we have done in the past with the quick amendment was that leave allowing deferral in those situations where you have to get, show us, put the easements in place, agreement in place, but then you can build a house, build a road, when you decide to build a first house. So, the new draft allows the deferral, so that you don't have to, you know, construct the road right away. Um, the extensions in the current ordinance is required boards approval, but with the draft, we are allowing two extensions administratively, so that you don't, they don't have to come to the board, if, you know, constructions delay for some reason. The plan requirements, the current ordinance are extensive, they are the same for any kind of road. With the new draft, we are allowing some flexibility depending on the type of the road, how many roads it serves, um, you know, so that we don't require, uh, the same set of extensive standards for in every situation. Like, if a property has steep slopes, then they would be required to do certain cross-sections, but if they don't, then they don't have to do cross-sections, so that's a flexibility we are trying to introduce with the draft. Uh, administrative approvals, the current ordinance has very limited options, and we are trying to extend that whenever possible, to allow, to keep them going, so that they don't have to wait for boards approval. This is a big one. Improvements on vacant lots, the current ordinance requires a road permit, which is the whole reason why, uh, we just raised so many things. The draft that's in front of you today allows for an administrative exception, where they don't have to apply for permit, they don't have to do all those requirements, they can just build a house without requiring a permit. That's a big one. Uh, administratively, too. Um, the various standards in the current ordinance are very vague, and they're based on practical difficulties and hardship-based, which is very rigid, but the new draft is allowing a little bit flexible consideration, uh, with regards to challenges that are beyond practical difficulties and hardship-based. Uh, this is also a big one. The current ordinance requires that the applicant work with the neighbors to, you know, do a private road agreement, or, uh, other things, where the applicant's hitting a roadblock when there are unwilling neighbors who are willing to, you know, help, be part of it. The draft is trying to provide, take the burden off the applicant, and provide options so that the board can assist when needed to deal with the neighbors. Um, we all know that a bigger challenge that has been piling up in the township is because of, uh, the noncompliant accesses that have been approved when they shouldn't have been, um, and the current ordinance has no guidance as to how to address upgrading of nonconform, noncompliant accesses. The new ordinance has a whole article dedicated to provide clarity and options, um, and then assist the neighbors to set the right expectations. So, I, I just wanted, I hope, there are many more things the draft is trying to do to make it better, but these are the major points I wanted to hit, and hope to clear some misconceptions, that we are, the ordinance is trying to make things a lot better, a lot easier, a lot quicker, uh, with the draft. And, um, the other thing I wanted to talk about is, so, the draft that's in front of the board is something that's been put together by the focus team, which we talked about, that included two of our board members, who are, who are also part of the road corps, who's also a chair of the road committee, and member of the road committee, and two of the planning commission members, because there are some amendments that are required that need to be done in the zoning ordinance to allow flexibility with frontage requirements, and then our fire chief and a fire inspector. The draft, that's part of the packet, includes, uh, an ideal situation, which would be better if we can do it that way, but at the same time, understand that what's ideal may not be practical at all times. So, what I'm looking from the board is to let me know whether there are any standards that needed to be scaled back, so that we can redraft the language to make that happen. That's why I'm here tonight, Mike is here tonight, to understand, you know, what you guys want to do, and then try to address those trends. And then I wanted to talk about a couple of other things. When somebody already has a house, which is on a road that is noncompliant, and they want to build a barn, all they need to do is apply zoning compliance permit. That is not triggering any requirements for any road upgrades, they can, they can build on if there's a house. And if it's a vacant lot, and they want to build a house, the draft is proposing to let them build a house. The one thing the draft is saying, if somebody's trying to split the property, then there might be some expectations associated with some upgrades, to at least have some, you know, short-term improvements to address fire. But if nobody's changing any status quo, the ordinance is not requiring them to make changes to the, the draft ordinance.
The current draft, the current draft, should, can I ask them to improve the road in front of their house, on this one?
Right. And, so what the, the goal is, of the idea I proposed in the memo, is to have, to approach this issue in a two-faced approach, a short-term, where we are trying to, you know, adopt an ordinance, so that we can at least get the people who want to build a house, make it easier for them, and then provide clarity for lot splits, and then have a short-term, a, a long-term comprehensive plan, the board can address after the amendment is approved, if they wish to, so, how to address the general safety concern that's out there, that needs to be addressed at some point. Um, with that, um, the, the packet, uh, the draft is divided in multiple articles. The first one talks about types of road definitions and stuff like that, I'm not gonna summarize what's out there, I will try and project that on the screen, so that they can look at what we're looking at. Um, except Article Four, which addresses existing noncompliant access, and Article Five, which talks about some enforcement, strap, abatement assistance to the residents, the first three should be pretty standard, and at the end of the meeting, if we can at least check boxes for some of the articles, we can at least try to do a phased approach, to keep things moving forward.
Okay.
Oh, one last thing, um, it's in the memo, but we did do, uh, we did identify a list of roads that are, that are noncompliant, or not, but, you know, roads which are nonpart of site conduits, and then we, we try to analyze them, give it a rating, so that we, you get a sense of what's out there, what we're dealing with. Uh, yeah, with that, I stand by for questions, if you guys can go one article at a time, I'm happy to, uh, expand on any of the items that are in there. Thank you.
Well, I think right now, I mean, if you, if anyone wants to give their overview of what the actual thing, we could do it that way, otherwise, my plan was to go through sections at a time. Okay, go ahead.
I would like to deliberate with y'all, but I don't want to end up deliberating with Street.
Right. And I think Street should, I mean, if we, there are things that, like, my first look at this, kind of needs to be clarified, that we would tell Street, you know, if we find sections that we want, alter, and, you know, for example, on the brick, there's an intent, different language or something.
Well, yeah, I think, I mean, Jeff and I were both on this subject, and I'm happy to go give an overview of, at least what my summary is, of what we discussed in the meeting, and what we ended up here. I've read this draft several times. I've read this draft several times, from Sri, the draft, and kind of what the intent was. And so Jeff would be with your just points also, but as well as yours.
Well, as far as I know, that group, that body, there were never any minutes and there were never any motions reported to this board, so there are no official recommendations from that body.
The, what was done here was the work with Sri developing some of the comments here on the work. And this is meant to be something you can comment on. It wasn't meant to be in retard or anything along those lines. I mean, you'll recall, John, when we did the firehouse, we didn't do any of that either. We had a firehouse meeting and we never had motion or minutes that followed up on any of the meetings.
This is a law. We're talking about a law.
We had special meetings that we did not give minutes of handing each of those meetings. You were part of a subcommittee.
I know. It's not the same thing. It's apples and oranges.
I disagree. The only is, none of us intend to do it night and day. And that seems to be what you suggest, or start the night. I guess I take offense if that's what you're intending.
No, I'm just saying there's no official recommendation from that body.
The, we're working with Sri to do this together. I'm happy to give my, you know, small local thinking. So if you want to keep going back and forth, I don't find this real.
Is it, is this the official recommendation, the draft?
Yeah, well, that's my opinion.
And if it's not, I mean,
Official recommendations come from motions and votes.
Well, the draft was,
Not from somebody's interpretation of what was discussed.
Draft was designed by Sri and with help from Matt, with input from all the other people. So,
Right. It's Sri's input with guidance.
So,
Correct.
John, I do want to, I don't know the exact way the subcommittee was formed and that, you know, might alter.
I don't either.
That might alter some of the,
Well, part of the problem is there's not, John is calling something a subcommittee.
No, I didn't use that word.
Well, it's,
I didn't use that word. My point is,
There is no subcommittee.
There's Sri.
Focus group. It's called a focus group.
Thank you.
There is no minutes in a focus group necessarily. There's notes that people take when they're chatting about some questions.
It was people that got together and had a discussion or more than multiple discussions, but there's no official recommendation from that body. That's my only point.
That's true. It doesn't really matter right now. Um, but to be honest, I don't think Jeff and Grant and Esther agree on everything that's in here. So this is basically that sort of goal. And it's okay. It was all okay. All right. So, um, I guess we should just go with, unless you have any other suggestions, section by section.
I'd like to make a statement.
Okay.
So, I've read this document multiple times, very carefully. It doesn't really answer the question of what is the simple problem statement or what is the problem that we're trying to solve? In my opinion, there is not a single dwelling in this township that cannot be accessed by an ambulance or any kind of medical service. My interpretation of the problem that we're trying to solve is the situation where you have a structure fire where we don't have water in this township, so when there's a structural fire, you have to bring the water to the fire. And that means trucks bringing two or 3,000 gallons at a time. And you can have a situation where you have trucks coming in and trucks going out. To me, that's the problem that we're trying to solve. I think there's a more efficient way and a less expensive way to solve that problem. And that is to require new constructed dwellings to have a residential sprinkler system. And you don't have to worry about whether or not multiple trucks can bring in two or 3,000 gallons of water at a time from a fire hydrant or a fire station that's however many miles away from your dwelling. I would like to remind everybody that we're talking about a police power ordinance, not a zoning ordinance. The reason I mention that is because our police power ordinance takes effect as soon as it's adopted. It doesn't have grandfathering by nature. Our current police power ordinance is 12 pages and it does need improvement. It governs private roads. It's the private road ordinance. Shared driveways are only mentioned in passing two times in the body of that ordinance. In the current draft of the police power language, it's 22 pages. It's the fir-, we, there was some discussion earlier about how long we've been working on this. This is the very first draft that we've had where the definitions are what they are. So after working on this for a year and a half or so, we just got to where we have decent definitions. This draft also needs improvement. It mentions shared driveways 81 times. There is massive new regulation in the current draft that doesn't exist anywhere in the old draft. It opposes requirements that even Z road does not meet. My driveway should not have to be better than Z road. This draft represents serious government overreach in my opinion, imposing an enormous burden on a large portion of the 2,500 households in Webster Township. Section 4.1C in the draft reads, and I quote, "It further intends to bring such non-compliant access into compliance with the requirements of this ordinance, either through voluntary action by the property owners, township coordination with an applicant, or enforcement by the township." End quote. I also believe that not only will this require an increased burden on our residents, it will require an increased burden on this body. We will be responsible for reviewing and approving or denying a lot more than we've ever done before. Then there's the question of the legal expense. Legal expenses to a township are difficult to predict, but they can be huge. This draft is a lawyer's dream. Section 4.4V, step four, section 5.1C, Circuit Court, section 5.2B, section 5.4B. Section 5.4B is not even lawful. We cannot use public funds to finance the improvement of private property. This document also delegates the authority of this township to unelected officials, some of which are not even residents of this township. And then the question, and this is where I'll conclude, how many trees must die? I, I went to one of our township board members' private road today. The private road is about 12 and a half or 13 feet wide. The trees are about 18 inches from the edge of that driving surface in each direction. If in order for that private road to be brought up to the specifications in this, dozens of trees will have, hardwood trees will have to be cut down. And that's just one example. There's tons of examples. How many trees are gonna have to be, be killed? How much natural beauty is gonna be permanently removed? Those are my comments.
Okay, so, one point and only one point. Section 5 of our current ordinance does actually apply. So that is incorrect statement.
I didn't say it didn't apply. I said it was only mentioned twice versus,
Well, you should allow you all to say it. It does not regulate driveway. It's very correct. Other than that, I guess,
All right.
Altered at beautiful, I'm sure someone else had. Can you read it?
All right. So, mind you, this whole question is, I did not want current residents to have to be held hostage since this debate has gone on. So the first thing is to adjust, that's what Sri brought up at the beginning. Some of the points that John is gonna be, I'll try, I'll discuss here also is, but in the process of doing this, the question about safety with fire, we spend a million dollars a year on fire. In the last 10 years, we spent over 10 million dollars. So the question about making sure we get the fire truck to the fire is the interest. It's purely a safety interest. Now, as far as asking the residents to pay for all of it here at the end of this meeting, I did not think that is fair. That's not my interest ones. And we found out that, I think this problem is in townships and in cities. We've had cases where we tried to adjust public safety, but there, there was some cases where building permits and certificates of occupancy were issued when they should not have. Then the problem showing up now, those roads are not meeting it, then what do you do? Even if we don't do this now, and I did not want those residents to continue to be held hostage, the failings of the patents. Now this issue about public funds, using public funds for private interests, as a general comment, I'm not interested in. But if the township caused a problem, if I was in business, I would be at the table trying to solve that problem. Both my resources and those resources would include financial. There's received guidance. We had guidance before that we could use public funds. Recent guidance says we cannot. But I would like to see it ideally be in a case where we can address safety that was the oversight of the township through some of the mechanisms that we have outlined. And then, once those improvements are made, it's then to ask the residents to keep the brush down, try to keep it to whatever it gets to. Now, some of the cases, this has been going on for whatever, I would do 30 years. In those cases, there's a variance process that we could go through and discuss that. We're not gonna go down and cut down every tree that's huge. Look at the Scully Road case, for example. Scully Road does not need exactly what's in here. I was on the board in 2016 when we approved it. The interest at that time was not to take down all those huge trees. Do the best we can with a reasonable approach. And that reasonable approach is what I think is the intent of what's put forth here. Can we modify it, yes. But the grand issues that John brought up, I disagree with, at least in his tenor and his tone. The issue is the cost effectively have a safe tension is the draw. And that's hopefully, that was the intent I wanted to discuss in our focus group. Sorry I used the wrong term, John. I noted you, since I did use the wrong term, noted you wanted to jump on that point. And,
I never said anything about it.
John, you did not get recognized yet.
Okay. So that, that's the intent here. Between the variance process to eliminate the exposure and the amount of money that has to be spent by residents and allowing them to get back to building. Focus in lots that exist to minimize what the cost is for lots we have this for.
Now, John, you may respond.
I would just like to say that I am a member of the Dexter Fire Department Board. I was not appointed by this body. I was appointed by the Fire Department Board. I recently went to South Dakota where I personally, with a team, inspected our brand new million dollar fire truck. I got to be one of the very first people to ride in it. I was offered to drive it. I've had fire trucks up and down my driveway, which does not comply with the language in this document. They absolutely can make the radius of my driveway and turn around. I, I am absolutely committed to public safety. And we, we talk about public safety without an understanding that more than 95% of the runs are health issues, not structure fire issues. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I do. First of all, I just wanna state a few things for the record. Number one, I did not like your tone when you were talking to Sri, so I just wanna be clear about that. I do not think that was appropriate. We pay Sri. Sri is an expert. When I have cancer, I don't go to my neighbor to treat it. I go to someone who's an expert. We took a long time to find an expert. She's good at what she does. She has the resident's best interest in mind in everything she does, and she listens to the input of people. The focus group that you keep to meeting had public safety people on it. So I, I think it's fair to say this is Sri's, Sri's input. Only Sri wrote this and Sri, and this is entirely Sri's decision. That's, that's just inappropriate for you to say.
She's putting words in my mouth.
Um, perhaps I'm putting words in your mouth. Your tone said a lot. Your tone said quite a bit. Um, two, saying that this document is 22 pages versus 12 pages and somehow insinuating that that means it's not as good is ridiculous. The 12-page document did not give us the guidance we needed to move forward. It was 12 pages and it did not have what we needed in it. This has a more concrete version of where we can start to make sure that when people run into this problem, they have the support of the township to move forward and get what they need to, to try to, to try to work through the through the complications of working with their neighbors to get what has to get done. So I would, I would prefer if we started the meeting with the intentions being positive, that we're all on the same page here because there's an issue here with residents who can't build and we're trying to resolve it. And we're using our resources to do that.
So I do before, I have two other things. So when you did speak about, it says, talking about providing, using our public funds to pay for private roads. The language that was in here was written before. We had, I had asked for an opinion about whether to do that. And so the answer, we now know the answer is, at least from our recognition is no, but at the time, that was not the case. The second thing is, I, I've heard this from a lot of people. I find it very insulting that you are basically going after Sri because she does not live here. I can't, no, that's,
Was I referring to Sri or was I referring to the fire chief?
Oh, okay.
People are trying to put words into my mouth.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then I apologize. So that was the only thing. Okay.
Jeff, do you want?
Did anyone else mind?
I'll just, I'll just say at one point, the fire chief and Ed Rudolph, when he was in his official position, we're at all these meetings, they read this draft, he solicited your input. We also looked at all the peer institution or peer townships here as to what their state for shared driveways and private roads as far as that with, that informed us and we're all aligned with that. So it suggests it's not an anecdote or whatever. I think John's point, we spent a million dollars on a fire truck. The highest, I'd like to say, if I spent a million dollars on that truck, I want to make sure it fits to the fire and save somebody's life. You know, think about what happened in the Schloss fire. George is here. We got lucky. It was dry. Because when they went down there, the first load they dumped was not on fire. They dumped it on the Schloss house to save it. A bunch of subsequent loads came down George's property to do the running. You can imagine if you're in a case where all of a sudden it's not that fortunate, a road where it's wet or snowy and you're less than 16 feet below the roads, that truck's not gonna be there. And that's the thing that keeps me up at night. That's the thing I like to travel through.
Uh, any more on the, thanks.
I'd just like to comment on the public expenditure. Spending public money on private roads. I am not in favor of that. I live in a community that has numerous miles of private road. I would never expect to ask other people within the community to pay for the care and upgrade of the road type of line. Just disagree with that philosophy. Secondly, when fire chief does make recommendations, we need to listen to them. We had a recent case, it was last meeting, where there was a recommendation and it was not supported by this board. We end up doing a compromise, if you will, but, you know, so we have to take that safety, those safety recommendations seriously and apply them. Okay. And I'll just finish as to the discussion going on here. Clearly, there are many interests that are deeply held. But we need to work together to find the best solution that makes sense, is reasonable, and, you know, keeps safety in mind.
Okay. All right. So,
Mike, before we move on,
Yes.
I just wanna say, this is not the be all and all. This is a discussion starting point.
Yes.
And this isn't new to any of us. We've had, we've had this information in front of us. We had the Brighton information and the other township information in front of us before. We've looked at a lot of this stuff. There's been people on this board when we were looking at approving somebody building on a lot that was already in place on a road that had been there for years. And we had individuals saying, because there's grass on the road, the fire truck can't drive on.
Correct.
And, yeah. And that's ridiculous. Yet, we, you know, we keep going round and round with this kind of stuff and we need to, like Dan said, we need to work together and get this thing done. And it's not gonna be perfect probably, but if it's not, then we go back and we change the little things that we need to tweak it to get it perfect. And if, you know, the big, listening to the public, what's the big issue that you have with this? And it's not that when somebody comes in and develops, that we make you follow these standards for a private road. It's the other stuff of, It's the other stuff of mostly our existing private roads. What are you going to require us to do? And that's the issue.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Okay. So I think we should just go section by section at this point, because we'll get through. I know some of it will be pretty straightforward. So we'll start with section one point one, the purpose and intent. I'm assuming everyone's looked at this. Is there anything, I personally have a recommendation, but is there anything anyone wants to recommend changing in section one point four?
I do, I do, Mike.
Okay.
On number, or item F, one point one F, sorry.
No, no.
One point one F, we talked about provide minimum requirements and procedures to approve safety and reduce noncompliance. I think we should add there a currently noncompliant, pardon me, noncompliant roads and shared drives. That sentence, as it stands, there is a little bit vague, in my opinion. Then if you go down to G, I have a question, and does this apply to current noncompliant roads and drives? And that's require that access to the interior of certain sections of the township need minimum standards and specs to support potential future upgrading and dedication, blah, blah, blah.
New construction.
Just new, just for new construction. Would you please clarify that? Thank you.
So I'll, right at the time, because it's very related. So in one point one E, we, so the overall purpose, I think it's great, but so E is some existing private roads and shared driveways should not be current standard. Well, part of what we're trying to do is to provide, so we recognize that, and we want, we're trying to provide a flexible way to balance make safety with the cost and the ability of residents to bring roads in compliance. So just that, you know, it's not only about safety, it's safety in order, we're trying to do the balance, right? So that's what I, and it kind of goes along with what you said. So I would like.
Complacency, yes.
Or E, or yeah, so E and F, and say something about, you know, our other purposes are not just, we have other, because if it's only about safety, then we wouldn't be worried about, so other people do build on a lot. Okay.
So when you're talking about E, you wanted to say something similar to, and this is one of the things that I brought up before, as far as providing some kind of guidance of avenues that property owners have to navigate these things for, to look at.
Right. Like, so, yeah, so that's a good add-on to it. My thing was a little bit different. It was more along the lines of, we're also, part of the purpose is to recognize that our noncompliant private roads may not be able to be brought into compliance because some of the easements are too small. I mean, that's where it is, right? For some quarter, yeah. So just, I think, putting in a little bit in that section about, basically the fact that we're also trying to make it easier for residents, or, you know, it's as cost-effective and as easy as we can to get it as safe as they can reasonably, you know, reasonably practical. So, so I do.
The intent of section four point one kind of addresses this point. We'll get to it when we get to it.
Right. But I mean, because it's the intent of the whole board.
Okay.
All right. Any, do the rest of you, are the rest of you okay with those kinds of changes? I do really like Tony. Got it? Okay.
I could say this almost in every section, or I could just say it once overall. I would like to remove all reference to shared driveways in this entire document.
All right, any? Alan and?
I don't know how you remove the shared driveway aspect of it, because if I split a property on a shared driveway, it becomes a private road. And, yeah, so I, so I don't know how you eliminate shared driveway on a property. It has to be able to explain to people what they might encounter if they split the property.
So with the additions, subject to, like, you have to proving the actual language of what Tony and I had brought up and what Jeff brought up, are we good with one point?
Yeah, I'm good. Of course, belongs to whatever goes.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's why, okay. So, one point two. I didn't have any notes on this one. Are we all okay with one point two?
I just wanted to know, one point two C, in the event of a conflict between the standards regulating the private roads and shared drives in this ordinance and those, in the zoning ordinance, the standards in this ordinance shall prevail. So am I to understand then that there is no need for reconciliation by planning permission?
There is still a need, but just in case if you miss something unintentional, we want to make sure of this one. How about this?
Well, the definitions are bad.
Right. Because we have issues.
Okay. Any?
I just want to pipe in on the shared driveway thing.
Okay.
We spoke about that, but just the thing, it might be more of a thing of there's to be select removal of it. I don't know if it has to be in every place that it is.
Will you guys?
But I think your bikes, please. I guess that on the shared driveway thing, I think there could be more of a select possible removal of it in reference, because I don't know that it needs to be in every place that it is.
We can go through.
Yeah, I think it was just kind of part of it, it's a catch-all. I think there is some that can be eliminated.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, I'm not speaking.
So anybody else on one point two? Okay. All right. Now, so the definition section one point three, obviously this is way longer than the old one. I had talked to Sri earlier about the definitions for private road permit and shared driveway permit. So the language that talks about construction, extension, or alteration of a private road does not necessarily apply to all the situations in which, that we have, where there's like a big lot. Like, some of them are not, they're trying to build on something that's already right next to a private road. And it's depending on, so, I, it doesn't necessarily, like, so right now, if you go to, for example, oh, we only talk about splits. It's only really about, we talk about splits. When you go to page eighteen, or twenty-six of one, post-teen, with the diagrams about the two examples of post-splits. The language that is in here about private road permits or shared driveway permits, because those are just basically tiny lots, they're going to be, the example on the right, they would have to get, they are trying, according to this diagram, they're extending the road or the driveway, and then they're splitting at the end. Okay. They would have to get a road permit, or a permit. But the people on the left side, on the other hand, they already touched the road, the private drive, they're not extending it, they're not doing anything, altering it. They do not have to get a private road permit at all under this particular definition. So, and which doesn't necessarily match with some of the language later on. So my request to Sri was, just so that we can have, like, alter, kind of alter the private road permit and the shared driveway permit definitions to cover what we're doing in the rest of the order. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, fine.
Okay.
Mike?
Yes?
Were we going to put stuff up?
Yeah.
Are you not looking for?
Yeah. Okay, so the other thing, I did have one, oh, in the definition for private driveway, there's, at the, I guess it would be in the middle, places and the nearest public comma private road. I would put in a comma after that, or shared driveway, I would take out the A. It's kind of a typo thing, really. If that makes sense. It's very minor, but. And then I did have a question about the SAD's definition. So the majority of it discusses SADs where robbery owners come to us and ask for it or else. The last sentence talks about the SAD can be initiated by the township or by a resolution. I'm guessing those are supposed to be separate SAD ways that SADs can come about. If that is the case, I would like to add that SAD can also be initiated by the township or by a resolution. So I'll be very minor. And really, the only thing, Mike.
Could we simply just say, apply SADs according to the rules of the state of Michigan, period?
Yeah, that'd be my preference to just reference act one eighty-eight.
Okay. Okay. So do we agree with that change?
I think so.
All right. Okay. So any other definition, like, concerns, anything?
I, thank you. Oh, go ahead, Dan. Thanks, John. I want to go back to private road permit, shared driveway permit, and some word alteration. So if a private road or a shared drive owners wanted to make some improvements, do whatever it is they want to do, which is potentially altering from existing to.
Good question, yes. I think I hear you coming from.
From existing to proving that, whether it's, whatever standard they feel, do they need a permit to do that?
I, the intent is, so what Dan is basically saying is, if you have a driveway that's like, everybody agrees that our twelve-foot out to, out to the public road is too narrow and they want to make it bigger, do they need a private road permit from that?
Intentionally, yes, but the requirements of the drawings can be flexible depending on the, you know, the scale of improvements that are required. The reason why we need a permit is so that we can verify if it meets the certain standards or if a variance is requested, we can make them go through the proper procedure. But if they're just trying to change, you know, do a gravel, upgrade the gravel maintenance, they don't need a permit. But if they're trying to widen the road, add a cul-de-sac, they don't need a permit. Permit is not needed for maintenance.
So either they're maintaining, and this community decides to do something on their own, or they're maintaining to widen the gravel back out to whatever it was, grass that's grown in, or to remove vegetation, maybe to re-spray the ditches that were built properly or built in over time. So do you do those maintenance items, or we're suggesting that they need to get a permit? Clearly, I don't agree.
No, that's a very good question. What we could do in that situation, which is consistent with what we're doing with compliance permit, is where they would reach out to us, explain what they're trying to do, and then they can determine whether a permit is required or not. I'm saying that because if they disturb over a certain square footage of grades, if they change their grades or disturb the land, they would have to require a social, soil and erosion control police and the washing and company anyways. So an opportunity, if they're just making sure that it goes back to where it was originally without changing the roadbed, without disturbing the land, then, you know, a permit shouldn't be required in that situation. It should be a part of upkeep.
So I guess, because, that's a great question.
That's a great question.
So if we can, I guess for that would be, if you wanted, if there was a way to add, alteration does not include that.
Correct.
And you can kind of carve that out, so we can make it really clear that if you're regrading your road, that's not a permit thing. If you're clearing it out to where it used to be, that's not a permit thing, and you're cutting the brush, you know, that.
So.
But if you're kind of making it wider, if we want some mechanism to make that extra width, you know, make sure it's deep top or whatever, that would be, that would be the difference.
But I think we're trying to, trying to find a way to make those improvements happen.
Yeah.
So if there's a neighborhood that wants to do it on their own, outside of this ordinance or this draft ordinance, then we should be.
Right. And I do think, like, some of those latter sections, you know, kind of give that whole, we want to help you do things. So if there's a, I do agree, I totally agree with Dan's, like, it's not clear enough.
Right.
So, and I also agree with Dan's observation that the whole goal is if you want to do it, we're certainly not going to stop taking that. We're certainly not going to stop it. So.
I would recommend the way to address provide clarity is to expand, add some provisions under section one point six, which talks about when a permit is required.
Okay.
Rather than expanding on the definition, we can probably keep the definition simpler, saying that it's written, written, although it is issued when required by this ordinance.
Okay.
When a permit is required by this ordinance, and then focus on when it's required, when it is accepted in the ordinance.
Okay. I mean, that sounds.
Yeah, but really what you're talking about, Sri, is, I mean, having something in there that if they do ditching, and it's a certain amount of ditching that's disturbing the area, right? And something like that, we should just have in there, may require.
May require, yes.
And there are guidelines for that, like, if it disturbs over X amount of acres or or feet, square feet, then you need a permit. That can be something that's in there, that if it disturbs this much, needs this. With regular maintenance, like grading and resurfacing a road, shouldn't be. I think the worry is alteration that's reducing the road, as opposed to, you know, somebody's building fences on either side, and they're altering it to keep, keep it to where you don't go off the edge or something. It could be a problem.
No, that's a great point, and a great suggestion. So I can revise the language to reflect that.
Okay. So either one of us can, the definition, or you're, I do think we should think as little as we can, that maintenance is not altered.
Sri, I finally figured out why we didn't understand each other when we were referring to a budding. Took me a long time, but I finally figured it out. When these documents, or when you talk about a budding, you're talking about a piece of real estate budding a driving surface. And when I think of a budding, I think of a road with a budding, a piece of real estate. So we were using the same word, meaning the different thing was budding the different thing. And I think that that should be clarified in the definitions. What is a budding what?
Yeah, I think my definition of a budding is consistent with what it is.
We both have the same definition, but which is, which thing is a budding? Is it the property that's budding the driving surface or is it, because think of a square of property where a road just goes right up and pierces the parcel line. The road is then abutting the parcel. The parcel is not abutting the road.
We introduced a diagram in the zoning ordinance to address the same thing, so I can add an image here too that defines what's considered a budding. Pictures, please.
May I ask a logistical question? If we're not using the. If we're not using the projector, can we turn the lights on?
Yeah, I can.
Works on wireless. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Any, sorry, any other definition things? So, that sounds like a really bad thing. Okay, so now, section 1.4.
I think we should strike A1.
The idea is that the zoning ordinance will be amended to say frontage on a shared driveway is acceptable. Well, we can strike that too, because that's covered in the zoning ordinance. To rephrase, the zoning ordinance currently requires that a lot shall front on approved private road or a public road. There's no reference that frontage on a shared driveway is acceptable.
And that's what you're going to use here.
Right, so the, that's where, that ordinance, the zoning ordinance, need to be amended to say that frontage on a shared driveway is acceptable.
Um, there's really about one or two. So, three, I have a little bit of a problem telling people who live on, and I'm not worrying, on applying private roads, that their lot is not accessible. Because, for, and honestly, for us, it won't make a difference, enforcing it won't make a difference. I don't want anyone to lose any sort of insurance or anything with some excuse that, well, the township says your lot's not accessible. So, I would, I don't know if you, I was, I'm open to suggestions, but I don't want it for you.
Would you like, every lot in Webster Township, shall we consider, wait, shall we? Or every lot in Webster Township shall meet the following. Take away all that others.
We can also add some clarification with regards to the exceptions in Article 4.
Okay, alright, we'll leave that one in there. We'll bring it up, but we need a little.
Well, I think easement should be all that's required for accessibility.
So, I guess, when John brings that up, it's an interesting point, because the private departments in the zoning ordinance, they're dedicated to wide way, I'm assuming you can't build without a dedicated right way or an easement, unless you're doing like an attic barn that you don't have to, in the zoning, right? So, do we need accessibility in this one too? Or should we say access, you know, something about to reestablish or the zoning ordinance, not worry about it in this one?
That's a good point, let me, let me try to capture that.
Okay, right, okay. So, yes, section 1.4, it doesn't seem like you disagree about, you know, that idea that they have to be accessible. Cause otherwise, you can't build a house, anyway, alright, um, okay.
So, when this was drafted, this was more keeping in mind, you know, typically new construction.
Right, okay. And if, and again, if part of your approving of the private road, sorry, any question, right? Part of approving the private road, for a new private road, and they go, here's our private road, here's our lot, that, so maybe we should keep accessibility in this one too, because at that point, we need to make sure that your private road permit request shows that all your lots are accessible under the zoning ordinance, I mean, including this new stuff, so.
The other thing about accessibility is, it's a requirement of the Land Division Act. So, and that definition does include, has an easement that provides accessibility. So, I think where you're coming from, if there's a new whole 10 units, like kind of coming in, to do those splits, accessibility must be addressed at that time. If we're talking about an existing lot, and is it currently accessible enough to prevent the building of a new structure, that is a different question outside the Land Division Act context.
Right.
But I think less of a moment, right?
So, alright, well, we're not going to dwell into all this, so, yeah, we're done on that one, okay. Alright, approving body, so, this could be a lot easier, right? So, do you go over those, as to what we have now, a little bit more? So, right now, if I want, if, so, if I want to come to, come to the township and say, I have my acres, they're on, the whole parcel is not touching with your church, and I want to make shared driveway through three lots, right now, who does that? The board? I think it's the board, right?
So, the current ordinance doesn't recognize new shared driveways. Everything is a private road unless accepted. That's the reason why the current ordinance only has shared driveway toward D-9. And the reason why the new draft has shared driveway multiple places, because every time the draft says private road, I want to make sure that the standard also applies to shared driveway. So, that's why it says private road or a shared driveway, private road and a shared driveway, private road and a shared driveway, that's why.
Well, when they did, okay, so they did the, okay, so, one we're talking about next week, with the new road and the split.
That's coming to you guys, because it's serving more than six lots. If it's serving three or less, then it's accepted if it meets certain standards, and that's addressed and demonstrated.
Okay, so, with the approving body on type 1, isn't that really a change to what we do now?
It's just the term, the type, the term of the type is changing, shared driveway, from an accepted road. Now we're, now we're calling it shared driveway.
Shared driveway's never showed up in the private road ordinance before.
Yes.
Right, it's kind of, it is in there, but it's like, the exception of, you know, this permit is less than three, I think if we're right, here it's more exclusive. Yeah. What's it, what's it trying to?
We're trying to get the general terminology back in.
Okay, so, does anyone have a problem with the, who's approving what, and what's going to happen?
I, I did write maybe number two might potentially go to the private commission just to ease our burden, but I wouldn't put the item three on them, or the item four on them. But, I don't, I wasn't intending to recommend any changes.
Some communities do do that.
Well, I guess that would be a good discussion, because of the last time we talked about the eligibility of ridge, and then Dan brought up some, Dan, you know, you had the opportunity, because we started here, to bring up your concerns about what the hell works with them. So, because at that point, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't get our input in until after the plan.
Unless, unless somebody seeks a variance or not compliant. So, you would still keep it in the general code ordinance, so that the variance is come to you, not go to the ZEA, but you would give the approving of our different planer issues.
Who's approving the plan?
Oh, planer.
Okay.
If you choose to.
Okay, does anyone have a preference for that? Josh is going to be.
Either way, it's going to be.
And Dan, would you?
Good.
Okay, alright, I guess we'll leave it with us, because hopefully it'll be very easy to do, I think.
You can all just change it.
And we don't have a huge amount of new private roads that we can't fit them in on. Alright, um, okay, so, 1.6. So, the 1.682, again, that and the definition section about when a permit, when we require the permit, I think it should definitely match, and again, in that one example, right now, I personally, I don't think that, like, left-hand side one would need a private road permit, and I don't really think that's, so, maybe my, because I just 1.2 would be my thing, um, okay.
And then we'll add the clarification Dan recommended regarding, you know, acceptance.
This is one of the spots, 1.6B, where I thought shared driveways would be a limit. Site condos usually don't have shared driveways, it's a private road.
Okay, I think that's. So, if they got four shared driveways on 1.6.
I think I'd like to keep it, because they, there's one site condo which only had two lots, but that was just fronting on growing the road, so that was okay, but there might be some times where they may not have lot splits available due to land division, or if they still want to split it, so they can choose the option to go to site condo.
I just think that'd be, that's a variance event, they're not going through that process. It's a different process to a plan, so. Private roads and site condo stuff is reviewed by planning, but shared driveways generally aren't, so.
I think we may need to add, your old-fashioned way of going, the planning procedures, it's not listed here.
So, the planning procedures are done through land division ordinance, which will automatically send them to you.
I'm sorry, how many percent?
A subdivision plan is regulated through a land division ordinance, so if there are such private roads, it'll automatically come to the board.
Okay.
But we can add it for clarification.
So, I just want to ask a question. So, using like the Rob, it's like the last time's example with Scully Road. So, Rob's property, he needed kind of an easement to get to the, straight up and down, whatever Scully Road is, that, that's still an individual driveway coming off of it, right? It's not part of a shared driveway, or not really, okay. That's what, that's how I read it.
Right.
On that, did you have?
I just wondered if shared driveways, I agree, shouldn't be an issue in site condos, but would they potentially come up in a site plan? Cause I don't know everything that you had to report in a site plan. And it's fair enough, if you want to say, hey, if you're doing site planning, then you're going to use the road too, not a shared driveway. Makes sense, yeah.
Anything else on this one? Josh, okay, alright, so, that's good, then, alright, um, okay, so, 2.1. So, my question, my overall question for this is, and I could be totally wrong, which is fine. Are we, so, does this mean a new private road or a shared driveway? Or does it also include an extension of an existing private road? And if they, it's supposed to, I think we should say that, I guess? Cause I just, it says a private road, and I got a little, because we're talking about all these different kinds of.
I think I would say, I would start the, the section saying that when a permit is required for section 1.6, then this applies.
Okay.
Because in 1.6, we are talking about when a permit is required, when one is not required.
And because, whatever, this, I mean, this whole section looks very much designed for you, but.
Right.
Okay. So, I think, is that already okay with that, like clarification? Alright, I agree. Alright, anything else on 2.1?
So, I guess I want maybe more discussion on that, because there are cases where we would like to see some of these items on an existing, where there's an improvement, extension.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's why I wanted to get that one too, but. I thought, I thought that was a plan that it would apply to, but it.
So, maybe I missed what you were.
Oh, no, my, my thing was, I just want a little clarification on that first sentence about.
When you apply.
Right, so, 1.6, Dan.
We tied it to a different section.
1.6.
What I thought I heard was, was being applied only to you.
Oh, no, no, this language itself, it's, it looks really similar to what we have right now, which we both, it was like, I, I guess it would, I shouldn't say it, cause it looks like it only applies to the road, it looks like it would primarily apply.
It's drafted, thinking, hoping this is the.
We're definitely going to do this new road.
Right, this would be the property, yeah, this would be the standards, but the variance can be applied.
Well, whatever the one point is. Okay, I'll, there's a diagram on the back, on page, I think it's 14 and 7, the year 6 and 22 for this. Any thoughts on whether we need to change this now? Or even if we do want to change this somehow, should we wait until the language is done, and then come back to the flow charts? Either way, I mean, my personal preference would be flow chart after, only because we're doing the flow charts to reply forward to, if that makes sense.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay, so we flow chart, and lines are okay with.
They haven't substantially changed yet, though, or did they make?
No, no, that's what I mean, I don't think, right now, it's changed, but, okay. Alright, so, 2.2. So, this is variances in general, right?
When do you need a variance? This is where it comes.
Correct. It's the same case as private drive permit or a shared driveway permit. It's geared towards new constructions, but it is also applicable to a great non-compliant taxes. To, the intent is that if you start creating two sets of standards, we're making the ordinance longer and, you know, confusing, so the idea is that this is the baseline, but there can be changes.
So, so for example, this, cause I asked Sri, so, for the rest of you guys. So, what we did last month, with, again, Rob Vissels, that was not a variance, because that requires different procedural work, you know, like publish, you know, that kind of thing. I asked Sri, and so, we're basically, we're only going to have variances as a way to alter, you know, if we have to, but they can't comply or whatever, it's just straight variance, not any other procedure. So, it's, it's basically means it will take two months instead of one month, getting done with it, because we have to publish.
I have a question for Matt. Does variance go with the land or the owner?
You can come back later. Generally, they're going to go with the land, similar to a special use permit, but it can depend. So, the first point to make is that you can decide, if your ordinance is silent, then generally, it's going to go with the land, but the ordinance can say, you know, X or Y or Z. Time duration requirements can also be applied. you know, X or Y or Z, um, time duration requirements can also be applied, um, and again, you can require that in the ordinance specifically, or you might have certain variances that are granted with conditions, one condition may be that it's for a particular use or owner or something, um, if that's justified by the project, so the variances are gonna vary. If there's a strong feeling one way or another, it would make sense to clearly state that in the ordinance as well, so then it's a common question and you answer it right there on page.
So, and I, I guess, I totally understand what Matt's saying, I think in the context of a road variance, like default's supposed to be with the land, I guess, because, so, but.
I think it's gotta be with the land.
For this, this is for this.
You don't want anything to be with individuals, it's gotta be.
I mean, I know, but Matt's saying this in other contexts, variance varies, we have lots for, for this particular. All right, so, um, the standards of approval, these are changes, right?
Yes, these are new ones, and then I've rewritten examples.
Um, two point two.
I can jump in here for ministry, yeah, because I'm here faced with the ZBA quite often, that, yeah, I don't want to do like that, is every time I read the standards of review on the ZBA, I always think that they need to be rewritten, often some of the things are, you know, questions that are asked, would that answer rhetorically, yes or no? And other standards of review are made statements that would then be true or false, and several of them are compound, there's an and in there, that both conditions, like, I always interpret, both conditions would have to be vetted for that condition to be true or false, and I was trying to be cleaned up here, I mean, so these are the three standard predicates that are, or principles that are in the ZBA, is that, um, practical difficulty and our necessary hardship concept is at one, the variance is requested, it's a minimum deviation is two, that follows parallel language in the ZBA's, and then the final one is granting the variance will not compromise the safety of the residents, emergency responders, or others, other users of the private or shared driveway, so all three of those determinations would have to be satisfied with the variance. And then Shree, true about the other those examples that are there.
I do think they're a lot, a little less vague than some of the variance standards that we had in the other one, um, does, do those standard, do we like those?
Obviously, you guys.
Well, because you talked about the thirty-three foot, the case of the easement, thirty-three feet, I mean, that would certainly fall into the no way, no how category of one, and then two, would that be satisfied, and then the question is, is there a safety question there by granting? That's the intent, you have to look for one, over hardship management, needless implied doctrine, is there a safety question being imposed by the decision we're making? If the answer is no, then you can grant the variance, if there is, then that's where the harder question will start to be, and have to be asked.
And I think all those are very similar to the ZBA stuff, and it's keeping that language consistent, but I mean.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering about the third one, I certainly agree with the, you know, intent there, but I also, um, wonder, um, you know, we may think a, I mean, variance is a compromise, right? So you're not at the highest level of ensuring safety, you're doing something below that, so us saying that, you know, it's not compromising, you're not, you know, we don't know that, it may.
What's your suggestion?
Well. I don't have a comment.
Oh, so I think maybe, like, so, I think I get what you're saying, and so, because what you're saying, this is a little, I don't know.
Subjective.
Ah, and a little strict, right? As compared to something like unduly in front of the word compromise, or something, you know, a little more, it is a variance, it is not, you know, it's not gonna be, at that point, it's not gonna meet what the fire department and some, you know, the other bureau standards. It do, so we are, so it is, right, so we can't, at that point, we are theoretically compromising, you know, um, or compromise as a variance.
Could you use a logic construct that if one and two are true, then you mean maximum amount of safety is exhibited on the given road? Is, for example, so it's on the width question, there's no way you can make a line for whatever reason, like, you might be able to trim trees or do something brush.
I, I think the suggestion Mike made could help. If you're unduly or unreasonably compromised, something like that.
Because, yeah, because that, um, in the, like, that's what we look for, these other things.
Mike, I mean, as to point of clarification, I wanna make sure that you and the boards clear that these are the same standards that would apply for new constructions, if somebody's asking for a variance related to a new construction, and also if somebody's trying to ask you to leave the road as is for an existing road. So is there anything you wanted to add to it that would cover both cases, or you want to keep those separate?
Really, it's a reasonableness argument, right, so you use the word unreasonably and, or would you say like unduly?
Mike, Mike said unduly.
Unreasonably.
I like, uh, granting the variance will not unduly affect.
Okay.
The safety of residents, um, emergency responders. Yeah, put some, um, emergency responders, access for emergency responders. Unduly restrict. I think not unduly compromised. Do you want me to one word?
Yeah.
Undo.
Okay. Um, so, if, okay, so I hear what Shree's saying, and if we decide to go with things like, let her in four point, what do you call it, we're in the back here, four point four, um, and we need to do a variance, I think the variance standard should be, they look like they work for both. It gives us a, here's our great thing we're looking at, no matter what kind of variance we're gonna be with the private road, and obviously, every situation can be different, so there's our little room too. That would be with, okay. Um, two point two.
Slowly, yeah.
All right, all right.
I just wanna point out, unduly is gonna be more restrictive than unreasonable.
Okay.
Undo or unduly means excessively, like an unduly harsh punishment, whereas unreasonable would be, um, exceeding the bounds of reason or moderation, so undue would be harsh.
Well, it's not harsh in here, it's almost a bit the other way, because in order for us to grant the variance, we would then have to find it.
It would not, it would not, if it does not unduly compromise the safety.
Then we'll grant.
I think you have less room to compromise if you use undue versus unreasonable.
Well, I don't think that would either work, personally, I think.
Fairly reasonable shows up in contract art.
Reasonable, see, the only problem with reasonable that, that I think is, you know, when you hit reasonable and we start fighting, then we're going to, so, because it's reasonable to do, it's not necessarily reasonable to do.
Well, there's no doubt there's a subjectivity word that we're trying to place in.
Right, I mean, that is, you know, that is, that's.
The whole variance process, we need to.
Yeah, exactly, so I'm, unreasonable, it sounds, I'm a P two, I mean, I think, I'm just trying to kinda give language, and I'm sorry.
Is it unreasonable or is it unreasonably?
Uh, I mean, unreasonably, yeah, okay, all right, so we're good with that, two point three. So, um, I guess are we gonna have a problem with two point three A two, given that the fire department, understandably, like, they would like it eighteen feet wider, like, wherever they want.
I was just raising my hand to address that.
Okay.
I've recently asked fire to review, um, the one that's on your agenda, the new road, um, which is a new construction, the new construction complies with the current ordinance standards, which requires it to be eighteen feet wide and two feet, and I've asked the fire to review the road and give their recommendation, they said, um, we can't recommend approval when it doesn't meet the fire code requirement, and then I was trying to tell them, we didn't adopt the fire code, so as far as the township is concerned, they have to comply with the private road ordinance standards, so at that point, they were like, then, you know, maybe if it meets the standards in the ordinance, you don't need fire's opinion.
I, I think we should retain the responsibility, and we should listen to their recommendations, but they shouldn't be required for them.
That's where I was leaning, so we can ask the township engineer to make sure it complies with the dimension standards in the ordinance, because now the fire, so fire review can be if required or if requested. The fire review was focused, emphasized a lot more because the previous ordinance didn't have any minimum standards for shared driveways and private roads, now that if we are having some, then fire review makes more sense for existing non-compliant access, but not for new constructions.
So, Shree, we have, uh, uh, any more on two? One more on two?
I think, sorry, continue. What, what I heard.
Are we on two?
I think so, what I heard, I just wanted to notify that the DAFD recommendation of approval applies for non-compliant existing roads, but for new constructions, we're just gonna ask the engineer to verify, comply to the private road ordinance. Right? True?
I think a common job is, is, with Shree, we said, we're gonna take the DAFD recommendation to prove, require approval, absolutely.
And I think we should listen to their advice.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
We should do what we should do.
Yeah, period.
Well, okay, so, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with that at all, I'm looking at, I mean, from the practical aspect of Shree, doing, if someone comes to Shree and would like a new private drive, um, we, we get the fire, that would mean, I guess, are we, are we trusting Shree to look at the recommendations of the fire department and then make her own decision about two point three A two? Or are you thinking about more board involvement upfront?
No, I.
Oh, no, I think, from what I heard, which is a good clarification, if somebody's coming in for a shared driveway permit, I would say, I would just refer to the township engineer to tell me, yes, it complies with the current road standards, and we would probably seek, it would make sense, it would make sense to seek fire department's recommendation, not for approval, but recommendation, when the township board is looking at variance requests or upgrading existing non-compliant roads, because there is a bit of that unreasonably determination.
Yeah, if, if fire department's only gonna be referencing the fire code, and it doesn't meet our, our standards, for instance, if we require fourteen feet, and they won't say that it be, it doesn't meet fire code if it's not eighteen, there's no point.
That's definitely a, yeah.
Everyone is gonna fail, even though it would pass for us.
This is on the shared driveway permit?
No, that's right.
And I mean, we, as, as John said, we've, we've gotten, you know, we meet with them, we get their recommendations, we meet a happy medium about what we wanna get done, it doesn't always meet fire code, especially if we're not modeling fire code here, so. So we get their stuff, they, to be honest, they probably don't wanna be saying yea or nay on it.
Yes.
As well, so.
Yeah, that's right, not that much to me.
So if it works out, we take away the DAFD.
Yes.
Can I have clarity?
Yes.
I'm confused with this, or you? Permits or any permit?
I think it looks like any permits, unless asked, we don't need, I mean.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a shared driveway right now, but it could be, it could be any of them before not being fire code.
Well, I think at this point, okay, so the way, if we go with the recognition and deal with existing locks, it's kind of grandfather again, and split it, I think all of them want nothing new, I guess, because we will only ask for a permit if someone comes and says, I would like three locks in this entrance road, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Isn't it just a little bit different?
Well, the definition of shared driveway permit is for construction, extension, or alteration?
We're gonna fix that.
Yeah, that's awesome. Okay.
I was gonna add for two point three three, I don't know, you brought up soil erosion, do we need to say that either a soil erosion permit or waiver? Should that be added?
Yep.
Because I know, I know we communicate with that.
We're trying best to keep the coordination going wherever possible, because that's where lapses have happened.
Right. Okay. So, on page eight or twenty-two, or sixteen and seventy, um, let's see. B, C or D? So, um, I pointed out, the way I read C two is, the zone, that's where the unless otherwise permitted is ordinance, in the other section where we talk about existing locks, that's where that would just kinda kick it out. So I don't see anything for me. Okay. All right, two point four? Yeah, right.
I just, same thing here, when we talk about permits with road commission, it could be permits with soil erosion, that's a general statement, so any place that we have that, we need to look to see if it could, could be added.
Okay.
Actually, I would probably just refer to any applicable permits from Washington County, because there might be great permits that might be required.
That, that's true too.
I'll just keep it general, any applicable permits from county.
So, two point four, this is what you're talking about with the extensions and you planning extensions, and this is different.
Yeah, I think this language has been discussed and amended.
Right.
Don't we just do this in November, we amended the zoning ordinance or the private road ordinance to allow Shree to grant extensions? Yeah, we did that in November, sometime last fall.
Right, it's the same type of.
Okay, so I'm, I'm good with two point.
Right, this is one that allows people to transfer properties without constructing a road.
Right, okay, all right, uh, two point five.
I just wanted to state for the record that the procedures that are included in this section are consistent with what we've been doing, and that worked, to have that seamless coordination between me and the township engineer in order to process a permit.
Well, it's not explicit, uh, we requiring a preconstruction meeting and an escrow for somebody that wants to make a driveway?
A residential, like individual?
A driveway.
Uh, this ordinance doesn't regulate driveways that serve just one housing. This only regulates if it's shared driveway or a private road.
I have a question, um, 2.5A1, about the escrow. In relation to the people who want to split and not fill anything. We're not, are we, we should try our part.
No.
Okay.
Uh, I think the rate is that...
Oh, but it's preconstruction.
It's your shape.
Yeah, sorry, my bad, okay. 2.5.
Sorry, I got a question on, uh, 2.5A3. Sri, question for you on 2.5A3, regarding the easement maintenance agreement recorded.
Mm-hmm.
So you're saying they have to be provided for a construction meeting, unless you granted them additional time? Under 2.3B?
Um, for the most part, if it's an existing construction, I mean, a new construction, there were, there's no, the applicants haven't expressed any issue getting it done in a timely manner before preconstruction meeting. But sometimes there might be challenges with getting the decisions, or we're still going back and forth with the draft language discussion. At that point, that can be, additional time can be given, saying that we need to regard this before we issue the final certificate of completion.
Is that included later? I may have made a note of that, but...
I will, I can remember, but I will make sure it's included.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, it's, uh, on page 16D2, where it said, "The zoning administrator may grant additional time for while the applicant demonstrates that the delay is due to unforeseen circumstances beyond the...
I'm sorry, Sri, where did you say that was?
Uh, page 16.
16.
1/6 of 70.
How about all the other ones?
D, easement and maintenance agreement recognition due to...
You're back on the DAF.
Hold on, what section is it, Sri?
Oh, I was looking at the page, it was on top. Uh, section 2.3D, which is what that one was referred to, commented by the zoning administrator for section 2.3D, so if you go to 2.3D2, that talks about that.
So this says that they'll provide it within 30 days of receiving partial IDs, site addresses, or issues of permit?
The second one. The sub-two. The zoning administrator may grant additional time.
Right, how do we know that they actually, how do you, so they already received the permit, right?
Right.
So what letters do you have if they never provide it?
Uh, the preconstruction meeting is there, and then issuing the, the house permit, uh, and then the final certificate of compliance.
Okay, so at the final certificate of compliance, is this a requirement?
Yes.
It's stated there?
Yes. It has to be, like, I will clarify that, if it's not, I need to look into it. But I believe I did the app, let me just check. I'll have my, I'll review it and make sure that it's clarified and referenced here, but yes. So if there's no leverage, extension cannot be granted.
Dan, another possibility is to just require recording before the permit is even issued. I understand from Sri, there's been some practical problems with that, but it should be solvable with a survey, and it may constrain that.
Oh, I want to clarify for that. So for new constructions, I didn't have an issue, but when somebody, existing resident is trying to do a maintenance agreement with the existing residents, there was an issue, because not everybody's on the same board and nobody, except the guy who's applying for the lock split or something. So those were the challenges that would have required extra funding.
Right, but, but that won't be an issue. We can, we can talk about that.
We can talk, it's a noncompliant access sensation, not new construction.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, sorry, where again? Um, 2.6.
So it's going on 2.5, it's probably handed for yourself, because it's typical for these things. Number four and B have excess spaces.
Yeah, that's it. That's unforeseen condition, you don't have control.
We're just...
It's justified.
Too many spaces, oh, spaces.
I can't do anything, I'm lost, I had words.
Okay. And I was justified, okay. 2.6. There anything particular? Okay.
I guess I don't know why they're saying at a minimum under A shall be required to ensure construction complies with the requirements standards.
Must have been.
Yeah, fine.
We can, yeah, it doesn't hurt.
Okay, fine. And for 2.6C?
Oh, C.
Uh, yeah, okay, the second C. Why are we not saying in accordance with the ordinance that this is within? We're referring to standards of Washington County road commission. For the connection, in accordance with the road or driving permit, okay, so...
Um...
Private road or driving permit that has been granted?
No, that needs to be fit, that's a minor oversight, because I was pulling that language from the zoning ordinance and trying to make sure it's consistent with this, but I'll fix that.
Well, I've been looking at it, for the connection or the intersection permit, right?
Right.
In accordance with the private road...
Or a driving permit for...
Or a permit. That was approved?
Yes. Approved, correct.
Okay. 3.1. I have a question about 3.1B. So, only, I'm only bringing this up because we have had... Pablo has figured out, oh, so that's 3.1.
3.1.
Um, B. So it's on page 19?
1907.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, 1907, okay. Um, so for B, it talks about legal interest in the private road. That part has kind of, in the existing things that Sri's trying to work with, interest in the private road and interest, it's like, I, I would like to change that to interest in the easement upon which the private road is...
Legal rights?
What?
Legal right or...
Legal, yeah, I guess legal right. So basically, I, I would like to try to...
It's sideways, so I don't...
Okay, I would just like to tie it to the easement itself, because we're having a prob, we...
Easement.
Right.
Yes.
Because we're looking at deeds to figure out who has the right to what, and they don't talk about private roads, they talk about the particular easement, the road goes on top. So I'd like to change it to easement first.
That's a good point, because that's what happened with the Minso laws.
Yeah, exactly.
More, he, or somebody else also...
Eric, hold on, all right. All right. Any other? Any other 3.1s?
I have a comment on page 1. To reference, uh, there are above in D and E various items, but then below in the page 1, in the existing survey, we're not asking for those to be included, so... So we should include the ideas of D and E?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'd probably move D and E to the plan section. Like, D and E would be 3 and 4. Or something, or part 1.
Okay, any more 3.1s? 3.2. So I'm gathering that the numbers in here were probably, it doesn't have focus curve, right? Like, it's the different driveway widths and...
I don't want to say that where applicable, we were trying to be consistent with, not everywhere, but the, the width of the private road was increased from 18 to 20, keeping in mind the new requirements for, you know, the fire trucks at distant duty. And then the shared driveways, the current ordinance is very liberal, where it allows almost half a mile? Quarter mile? So that one was the other provision from the existing standard.
Yeah, so the fire chase, they have compared 800 feet of those. So it has 800 feet. 16 feet of the shared driveways came from some of the work over in the peer townships as to work with the outside, it was pretty before, at 16. And, you know, Ed and Doug, the fire department, were attached, they actually wanted 22 feet for the driveway. Right now, this is at 20.
Okay, um, does anyone have a problem with the minimum pavement width?
My answer is a good question. Pavement doesn't mean it's asphalt, it's the gravel.
Right, yeah, right. Minimum approved, I don't know what everyone puts, not approved portion of the road. Okay, um, so I have a question about number 2 on street parking. Um, so the way I read this, like, if you're on, is that, so for this new, for new, whatever, the standard is now for private, a shared driveway, it would be 20 feet plus 16?
If you want parking on both sides. The reason why that's in here is because of the zoning ordinance, when somebody's doing a private road as part of a side condo, also refers to these standards. So if somebody's proposing on-street parking, uh, to allow for additional width, so that...
Okay, so can we change 2 to, any proposed on-street parking?
If tripled, yeah, then tripled.
Okay. Because I was looking at that going like, and then I can see putting, nevermind, I don't know. I know, that always worked out, but that makes a lot more sense, we just said, okay.
And that's also for, like, a permanent setup, it's not, you know, hey, you're just parking.
Right, yeah, sorry, yeah, so...
Or visit someone, perhaps, yeah.
Okay, um, so 3. As a personal person, my personal opinion is these minimums are too high, given what we're actually talking about. 66 minimum easement width is for a double lane, like, um, I mean, like, basically, so 200, right? I do understand that we want an easement that's wires in the, like, the approved portion of the driveway for all the other stuff. But, I mean, that's the length of this building, and that's way too high. 40 for, that would be, I mean, that's the width of this building, basically, it's 400. So, um, it's not gonna cost me to go, no, I'm not gonna vote for this, but I personally think it's too high. Especially if we start trying to, trying to start trying to do something with any, if we're using any of this for existing roads, I'm gathering most of them are 33 feet. My easement for Webster Church is 33 feet, and I have to act on it, right? So that's my only, um...
So traditionally, eastern sort of roads and private roads are generally 66 feet wide?
Not really, they're 33 feet wide, unless they're a big one.
Uh, I disagree with that.
Okay.
But the reason for that is so you can have ample space for drainage, and you have ample space for utilities and...
That's this long for somebody's, like, two-lane private road.
You're saying this building here there is 66 feet?
This, this part?
I can just...
I tried to count, and I'm only, because I was counting a little square, and I could be off by a little bit, but...
I, I can just provide one context, then you can, you guys can discuss the number. One of the intent, in Article 1, says, "Required an access to the interior or certain sections of the township meet minimum standards to support potential future upgrading and dedication of such driveways to Washington County."
Right, but we're not gonna dedicate, I think that's what I'm saying is, like, I mean, you get it.
That's where the 66 came from.
If we tie to something like where we think that that private road will ultimately become a big public road, but for most of these private roads, they're never gonna do that.
So put a caveat on there, 66 feet for new...
We could do that, too.
And existing should be, whatever. I, I mean, I get it, 40 feet, it's, the easement doesn't also do that, usually those are utility easements as well. So they usually would...
And for the existing ones, I mean, like, for, just for my personal thing, my utilities, like, electrical does not come down my driveway, it's sideways, and so some people, they have other utilities.
Right, I, I think we can give, provide an option for a smaller driveway, but then put a disclaimer in there that this might, um, prevent them from ever asking to be dedicated to public. Uh, the dedication to public driveway is not just necessarily to see that, oh, this can be connected to another road, it can also mean that I don't want to do the maintenance anymore, can county take care of it?
Right.
And county will only accept roads for maintenance if they meet certain standards.
So I, I guess a big question, has, has county ever accepted a road like that?
Um, I think some of, some of the roads in the side condo, they, they request county to make, um...
For plumbing and stuff?
Right. Um, but I haven't seen any of the, anything on the side, side condo, but I know of this, um, it's the one at the, uh, non-territorial and, uh, Webster Churchill.
Rarburg?
I think so, isn't Rarburg?
Rarburg, north and south.
Yeah. I might be wrong, sorry, my memory is not great, but there are some situations where the people decide, you know, we don't want to take the responsibility of maintenance and then have requested the county to maintain those, then county will require sixty-six feet easement.
But those, those were also planned developments, that.
Right.
We're not talking about somebody on a pillar.
Oh, no, I'm not recommending you do sixty-six feet.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that's where the number came from.
Right, no, no, you're right.
Right, if you do, or, if you are going down to, uh, other than sixty, it may not be the intent that's in G. Um, so we just have to put a disclaimer there that, okay, you can choose to have a smaller easement width, but understand that, you know, it may not be a little future adoption by the company.
I would just say, if we're gonna go around, like, to make sure figure C, that our engineer takes a look at that, as to what we keep, or is some example for drainage standard?
So, just so I'm clear, so you're, uh, you're considering forty feet minimum for all private roads and shared driveways, and people can do sixty-six if they choose to?
Well, I, I thought the easement width in, and I could be wrong again, was tied to, um, amount of expected traffic per day. In, in the other, well, it's already organized, isn't it tied, I thought it was tied to that.
Um, uh, I think it was, the reduction is tied to it. Like, it says sixty-six, sixty-six feet is the minimum required, but you can go down to forty if the trip generation is not high, or if you don't have potential for adding more lots to it, or.
Well, and that's the thing, if I look at those numbers, the private roads are not gonna have those numbers.
They have sixty-six. Right, that's why we took away the trip generation chart from this draft.
So.
So to Dan's point two, most of the private roads, they don't meet the drainage requirements. I mean, that's, that's really, when you start talking to back of ditch, that's, that's why you have sixty-six feet. I mean, if you're supposed to have enough shoulder to safely have a ditch in there and have runoff drainage, that's generally what it's for.
Wanted for a slope to give for certain depth.
Right.
I'm just looking at this, basically.
No, I, I agree.
I mean, I get, this is.
No, I'm, I'm saying that mostly.
I get it, I just.
Most of the existing private roads don't have that, that's why when we say, something that's new, that's coming in, this is Rarburg, has to meet sixty-six feet.
And I'm, I'm good.
Something that's existing, we, we say if it's existing, we would require forty-four, and, and you could, I thought, we can look at whatever that number is and say, what is, if we're saying twenty feet and we just have the water shedding off.
Right.
Then that's what it should be, I mean.
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree with that, if we're gonna do sixty-six, if it's for the, the new one, sixty-six feet.
So new private roads, sixty-six is fine, new shared driveways, forty feet may be acceptable, existing non-compliant access, thirty-three feet minimum.
Mike likes right, it's actually in our current private road ordinance, table seven. It's a package page forty-five, seven, yeah. So it's trips per day, four hundred trips per day, unless it's forty feet, and it goes up, fifteen hundred trips per day is sixty-six. Mike, I don't find it all, but this, it would be engineer's duty, just make sure that the math works on the tree issue.
Yeah. Okay, so anyway, yeah.
So on, um, three, two, A, three, can you check the, uh, records of the section?
Yes, on sixty, right, yes.
And there's a period here.
Okay.
You're supposed to be clicking.
On the bottom, you have A, B, C, A.
Yes, thank you.
So for the, okay, so then, three point two, A, five, the turnaround cul-de-sac, with, uh, private roads or shared driveways, one of the one-fifty in line? Um, can I ask where the one-fifty came from, cause it seems like a bit short?
Um, the fire code requirement, based on backing off, backing up.
Okay. Yeah, I, I kind of figured that was it, so I just wanna.
I'll have a question for you. See where it says number six and number seven, see figure A, I'm sorry, see figure one, I don't see figure one.
Figure B.
Oh, B.
Okay.
B.
While we are at it, um, the dimension is forty feet for the cul-de-sac, for the, uh, diameter. The diameter, which is consistent with the current private road ordinance, fire was recommending to consider ninety-six, based on fire code, I just wanted to put it out there.
The forty feet is radius?
Current ordinance.
Okay, so I would suggest that we add, uh, in figure D, you have eighty feet.
Ninety-six.
But then put an additional number in there reflecting forty feet for the radius?
Like, so you're saying ninety-six feet for new constructions, but eighty acceptable for?
No, I think Dan was just saying that in the diagram, so we say the radius is forty, but the diagram said the diameter is eighty, he wants with forty.
Forty there, it's a B, okay.
We leave A.
What?
Just make reference, make a good reference, that's called.
So it's consistent, they can leave.
Or say a seat chart, whatever.
How do you fit that in a forty-foot, uh, easement?
You gotta have bigger.
I, I have a question. Suppose, I'm, and I'm looking through my materials, and I'm not seeing it anywhere. Have we done a study on how wide these easements currently are?
If they are. They're all over the place.
They're all over the place. What are we gonna do as a body with the easements that are too narrow, that don't fit these?
Varys.
Nothing, okay. We're just trying to establish, if there's a new road, like the Velvet Ridge application, this is what it has to be.
I think the existing one, thirty-three is where it said the minimum.
Sorry, I just wanna go back to the figure idea again. I don't know why we start with figure B.
Yeah, there should be B.
So, I think we need to change the names of that, too. Yeah, sorry.
Figure D is the first book chart.
Is it? I didn't see figure on it, but thank you, cause I looked at that one.
So, and then, so.
Oh, there it is, okay, thank you, I was thinking of the top, okay.
So, John, this, when you were talking about the fire trucks, you were talking about coming around, what you have. Do you know how wide your insurance is?
How wide the truck is, or?
No, here, I mean.
Oh, I gave you and Sri a copy of the, the turning radius on the vehicle, it's, eighty feet is way more than it's necessary, way more.
Probably, did we get that from the chart?
It's ours. Yeah. I have a question, I have it in my office. A question related to the cul-de-sac radius, um, radius of the easement area around the road, we're not providing information on that anywhere.
Uh, I think John just raised, I know I'm doing that to myself, I'm gonna add language to clarify that.
Well, I mean, I guess we have, I mean, technically, before you put easement, forty, it won't fit, eighty foot circle, I think I put in a thirty foot. But it's not gonna fit in the sixty-six, or?
My, my easement is sixty-six feet, it won't fit. Right, so it needs to be greater than that, obviously. If you look on page forty-two of the existing, that's, that's the existing one, there's actually a road detail that talks about turning around, turnaround areas, and circle radius, and then right-of-way. You can utilize that. Page in the package, it's page forty-two of seven.
I, I wanna emphasize, I want the fire truck to get around.
Right, right, yeah, so, I mean, when we talk about turnarounds, we could just have easement for a turnaround, add that as a line?
Right, um, I think the question is, is it gonna be the easement is at the edge of pavement for turnaround, or ten feet from edge of pavement? How much buffer do we leave for grading, or do we give it a turnaround?
Well, the current looks like it's fifteen feet for road surface to the edge of the right-of-way. Um, or twenty-one in the case of a private road.
I'm gonna check with Jack to make sure the math adds up, and then propose one in the next meeting.
Okay, um, I, any, I over a clearance, fourteen, some line, right? Pretty easy to do. I gather that all these site distances are probably in the zone anywhere in the screen now, right, in the way? Okay. And I, I mean, I haven't been referred to, like, Jackson, about all the other, any of this other building. Road gradient, so, personally, so.
I think most of the standards for the road build, uh, from C through E are just same as existing standards. E is a new one, uh, it's just requiring some site addressing signs, because that has always been a challenge, trying to identify where the street number is. Route F is a new one, road names, because we have two wheeler roads in the township, two Valley View roads in the township in this west pillar, east pillar, just to avoid confusion, we introduced F, so that we can just make sure that road names are not confusing or be redundant. H and I are included in there, um, H is included in there, because we want, we put so much effort in Article sixteen of environmental regulations for township zoning ordinance, we don't want to lose sight of that, you know, protecting our natural features. I is a recommendation from Master Plan.
Yeah, the natural features people are, that's the Coltar thing, right?
Right.
That's the Coltar.
I like Coltar.
We don't like that.
Okay. I do like the signs, um, especially, like, talking about people putting things in their turnaround, you know, putting up signs, working the turnaround.
I do have a question for the board. One of the comments that was raised is that we currently don't require names for shared driveways. That's why we have a driveway that goes off non-territorial, act, providing access to six houses, but they all have addresses of, of non-territorial. It can be, so the question for the board is, is, would you like to start naming shared driveways, or keep it?
Oh, no.
I don't have a recommendation either, because I, you guys decide the policy, I just, I just won't submit what you're trying to do, I just wanted to ask.
It should be able to fire. So Sri, the example that you used, Sri, is not a shared driveway because it has more than three?
Oh, there's a list of shared driveways that also was included.
But that's not a shared driveway, by definition, more than three is a private road?
Yes, the biggest spreadsheet is that, but we do have the twenty-two drivers listed in this spreadsheet, that only serve up to three roads, and they don't have any meter.
Does your driveway have a name?
No.
Neither does mine, I like it that way.
Okay, um, three point three, made this, I'm sorry.
Comments, on, uh, the Coltar. Do, do we have a prohibition ordinance for both, uh, within the township?
No.
Not now.
Okay. So, we're saying it's prohibited for asphalt roads. Do we need to include, as much as I hate to say this, John, and shared driveways, if someone wants to pave the shared drive?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, and then back on, uh, page thirteen, um, the standards, the figure C. Uh, I think we need to clarify a couple things, on the top line, it says forty to sixty feet. And that should be, I believe, sixty, sixty-six feet?
Yes.
Um, I'm also curious, this is for gravel, we have, uh, we're calling up a subbase of six inch, and then we also list eight-inch M dot plus two, or, then we also list eight-inch M dot one-one W A. So that doesn't, to me, that doesn't align with the standards in the chart above. So we need to, we need those one or the other, right?
Right, that was the comment to the engineer, to make sure, make sure they're consistent.
And then, uh, similarly, um, figure D, you prep the sixty-six foot tempo. And then, that needs to be in alignment with the chart on the prior page as well.
Yes.
Where we're showing six inches of, of M dot plus two, or ten inches.
So in the G, uh, single point of access, I think we should change the word require to recommend, because again, I think the authority should stay with this body, not some external person or organization.
Yeah, and that's, on that same point, Sri, back on to section three, two, stuff with all the, uh, road dimensions. Footnote A talks about all the, the Fire Chief, probably isn't shown that.
I'll review the entire ordinance, make sure we don't re-update that. Before we move on to three point three, I just have a question, uh, I'll point out one thing. The current ordinance requires that the maintenance agreement is reviewed by the township attorney. Um, with this draft, we are wondering if we have a draft to provide to residents, that he doesn't need to go back to the attorney for every review. So that's why that one was taken out of the draft that requires the township attorney to do. Uh, and then, one of the next steps, we included that, you know, our attorneys will provide a, a template that people need to use. If somebody uses a template that is not provided by the attorney, then it would require the attorney's review. Okay.
I guess I'm just gonna be the person who asks, when are we, what's our limit for the evening?
Oh, so, I have, I have been requested to end our evening at the time we hit an impasse or ten, and max.
Well, I'm, I'm going to say.
Then it's out, or?
I'm, I'm going to say right now that Article four, if we get through Article three, Article four is going to be in the past.
Yeah, Article four.
Or five are the ones that we really.
Four, I think, or, we might be, we could be get that far, four, one, two, and three, we might be okay with four point four, it's down.
Will there be time for questions for us, or no?
Comments?
Comments, they don't leave questions though.
So that needs.
There's row leading too. Yeah.
That needs to be commented in our meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
So, we'll stop, our stuff, and if. So we'll stop, our stuff at nine o'clock.
What if we just do three, section three-three and three-four?
Okay, good to meet you, all right. So, three-three.
On section three-three B, responsible party, I'd like to have something in there that says if this responsible party changes, that he's in this association, the road occupants, whatever, have to notify the township that there's a different person or party that needs to be responsible. Because we've got situations where nothing has ever been recorded since, what about the nineties, eighties, whenever they initially set their homeowners association up and they elected a president, we have no clue who it is now. So that, I'd just like to put that in.
It's just a, something like that, I think that it's, we should just contact those people or send letters to them asking. I mean, we ran into the same issue when I worked for the drain commissioner's office because there were, every one of these subdivisions and stuff had drains in it and it changed and sometimes it fell off the wayside. So they, for notifying people and doing things like that, I'll do that unless you bring it to their attention.
Well, if it's at least in our rules.
Take your money.
I'm sorry. If it's at least in our rules, that it's their responsibility to tell us if this individual or organization changes, let's get a little bit of personal responsibility into this someplace.
But what if they don't?
Yeah, what if they say not it?
I mean, and that's usually what happens, I mean...
If they, if they don't, then they go on a hunt to find out who it is and, and so on. I don't recommend it, put any penalties to it, but just say that it's your responsibility to tell us.
Sometimes there's nobody that's like the road captain. I mean, that's literally what it comes down to. I know in Scully, when we set up SAD, there was somebody that specifically was that, but in every other, in every other situation, unless you're gonna say, if it's an association and there's a president...
Okay, just second, Jeff, I'm interrupting you. Right here, at a minimum, the agreement shall include the following elements, and he is responsible party. Okay? Just put it in there, let us know, that's all I'm asking. I won't vote no because it isn't in there, but...
No, I just think that's because that's usually in the maintenance agreement if there is one.
And they should, yeah, that's what they're saying, maintenance, this is an element. Question three, though, like, I call you and I say, oh, the person who is listed as a responsible party on our road agreement is now moved. Where do you record it? What are you gonna do with that information that's gonna be meaningful? Well, if we have to keep copies of the maintenance agreements, it should be attached to that.
They don't have to amend the ordinance agreement, we just have a no additional agreement that this needs to change.
I don't think we're taking responsibility to hold a copy of everything, they should be, you know, recorded, but...
Yeah, and that's the original people that signed it, and there should be somebody that signs on it when they buy it, assuming the title search is good, which, maybe that's a lot of stuff.
We do, I mean, as a practical matter, we want you constantly, we can always send a letter to everybody on that road.
Yeah.
Who's in charge at this point?
If we have to do that, yeah, because we're gonna write you the ticket for not cutting your tree brush.
Whatever, yeah.
Okay.
We could write on the treasures, coattails.
So, any other three point three?
I just have a general comment. You know, I, from where I sit, the maintenance agreement is the single biggest source of heartburn in almost all of the cases that have come before us, and to me, this is making it even harder.
Well, so I, I understand that comment. A maintenance agreement won't be a problem with a new road because it's basically set up at the same time as a new road.
And the local.
Right. And I think, like, so Article four, if we discuss maintenance agreements that, on roads that are there now, we could and/or should change what we do with maintenance agreements in that section, because that's the roads that are there versus...
For the new ones, which, I read section three point three is for new ones.
Or if we, if we want to do a maintenance, I mean, this, this looks like...
Whenever I mean, it's agreement is necessary.
I think, please, I'm down, because you're exactly right. Okay, maybe the hardest thing harder.
Why, John, why is that harder? I'm not being impertinent, I'm just asking, why does it make it harder? What we've...
Well, it's practically impossible now, right?
Well...
We present these people off and get the witch's broomstick and they come back every time and say we can't because people won't.
But, but, but my question is, if you look at this, what's laid out that should be in the maintenance agreement, why does this make it harder to get?
Well, this requires agreement from every parcel that's being served by the private road.
And ours does now too.
And therefore every, every owner.
And ours does now too.
Yeah.
Yes.
But this is for new ones. Generally speaking, I don't know how you come up with that.
Well, I think just, four point one is for existing. So if we want, I mean, if we, we kind of all agree about the maintenance agreement problem of existing roads. And I think if we wanna, these, yes, we could put in an exception that you don't mean the maintenance agreement, and we go in four point one, or whatever, you know, within the board. But for a new one, I think we, at least I, I think we all want ratings agreements on anything new, right? Everything's gonna make a lot easier coming from.
We need a maintenance agreement on anything, we got the part of the standard. I mean, take, I mean, honestly... We adapt this ordinance, section three point three will apply to every private road.
Right.
Unless we grant them a period.
Or we make an exception at four point, whatever. You're correct. And I would propose later when we get to it that we do make an exception in the board.
Right, it would be a very, I mean, it's, it's obviously, I mean, a difficulty or unnecessary hardship.
Right.
When you go to do something like that and you've got an existing road, there's no way that you're gonna get people to sign on to a maintenance agreement or easements or any of that other stuff. That's why you're looking at variances and then what to do with the existing. A developer coming in and saying, hey, I want a variance, I don't want to do a maintenance agreement, we're gonna say no. Because it's not a hardship for them. They own the property at the time that it's happening, and at that time, they can, they can sign off on all that. It's not a problem for them. I want to...
No, I, I kind of agree with that, so...
Okay, I might, some need, but section three point four, I think I got whatever I need to revise when we discuss the table, so I'm good with that.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna get to next, next section's report.
But I really want, I was hoping, if you can, if you are willing to entertain, to at least have some kind of discussion on four point two, because I have, no, okay, I'm just trying to speak for the residents, I'm just trying to build a...
Do we, in general, do we agree with the concept of...
I just wanted to try because I've learned so many...
We got a couple, do you want, like, do we agree with the concept of if you have an existing lot, an existing, whatever we call easement, that we're not going to make you get a road permit to build your own residence? Not to split just one house, one lot? As a theoretical, we agree with that concept? I think that's what she's looking for.
Right, and we can take references away about BAFD fire chiefs because we talked about, you know, let's not look into that, but the reason why I'm being very persistent on this one is because I speak to residents every single day and I want, we demand today.
Right.
But, but, whatever we say to you tonight doesn't change the law on the table.
It, it wouldn't, but if I get some sense of where this is headed, there's some, you know, clarity for them that if they wait, things are gonna be positive.
But you can't, you can't make sure and say that...
I can, but I just, that's fine, I get it, I get the point.
Okay. Didn't we just do that for Mr. Witzel?
Yes.
And we also did something similar for Mr. Wheeler?
Well, we have a...
This is a shared driveway.
Looking at it, yes.
Conceptually...
Yes, essentially, I think we...
That's consistent with what we've done.
Right. I do think conceptually, that's what we will do.
That's all I want, that's all I want.
Okay, at least, okay, so, okay, so I guess at this point, three point four is okay, twenty-one is okay, and we will, I think we can totally get down. Thank you. So unless there's anything else, I would like to call to the public. Any else? Okay, I'll do that.
Good evening. So I'm down in general on the Harbors Drive. So it seems to me a lot of the angst I'm reading is really about existing non-fire projects. And I think that a lot of, a lot of us see that there's, there are restrictions that have been placed on us when we bought this property, those good faith, perfectly fine. Right, so now we see language, congrats, I get it, but see language where we're gonna have to pay, to your point, sir, about to bring these things into compliance, I think the language may need to be softened up. I think there needs to be very, a lot of clarity, Mr. Supervisor, you mentioned it on the outset, there's a lot of, a lot of angst, right? And I think it needs to be very clear when these, when these things get in, when is this or when this is gonna get for existing non-compliant roads, right? Maybe on your website, I would suggest what you said at the beginning, we're trying to improve this, right? And here are the things that we're trying to improve. Everybody will agree, new, new projects, those of us who bought property on an existing road should not have to pay for improvement, after the fact. Another point from me is that I think listening to your draft conversations, you need a completely different section in your ordinance for existing non-conforming roads versus new projects. Even in the room here, it was confusing to all of you, which one are we talking about here, right? So I would suggest you break that up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
My name is Sherry Austin, I also live on Lucy Drive, I've lived in the area for thirty-four years. I have a couple acres on a private road with about ten residences. Our road does not comply with the ordinance, so then the private road amendment had proposed, it would cost us millions of dollars, take down millions of trees, that is totally unnecessary. Fire trucks can get down our road, I saw one go down the road the other day without a problem, and I think something, as Devon pointed out, needs to be addressed for these types of roads in this amendment.
Hi, everyone, thanks for the opportunity. My name is David, I'm on East Villar. So similar situation on other residents that purchased property that were not able to build them. So same request as I've had on other meetings for this group, right, is that, hey, there's a lot of opportunities, there's a lot of things to improve in regards to roads, and just pleading with this group to recognize that previous ordinances were introduced that made roads non-conforming and are now preventing us from reasonably building on property that we just... Ask this group to continue to stay focused and dedicated, and though there's a lot of important things to be asked today about, maybe it's section four as a whole, right, on what it is that we need to do, not just for myself and a handful of others, but for the future of the community, on allowing us to have the flexibility, the reason why we have to purchase land in this township, pay taxes whether we have a house or not, to be part of this community. Thank you for your attention, your hard work, and it's not enough, we need more. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Other public comments?
I have experience with the part of Mass Lucy Road, and I think Lucy Drive's been there for almost fifty years, and it's very narrow, like now, where it's like twelve feet of pavement, so we can see, based on the ordinance, we definitely have to do a lot there. We also do have utilities that are right now, hopefully both, I think, are about two and a half to three feet ahead of the pavement. So again, I don't understand how we could move utility poles and things like that, and we also then have trees that go a half mile in price, so again, they're within three, four feet on either side of the road, so the cost of just moving trees for ten houses, yeah, I don't know, I think we're looking at hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars just across the road, across the bridge, plus the... I think that's a very large burden to put on ten houses to come up with maybe a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars per household, so going into compliance financially or...